Passed out the packets for you. First, um, few things I'd like to talk about personnel dispatchers. We have two new dispatchers that started, John King, who is, um, has two years' experience with the Rentham Public Safety Dispatching, and Walpole resident Kevin Quinn, Walpole High School graduate, uh, who got his criminal justice degree at Westfield State. Both are doing great, uh, still involved in training at this point, um, but they are, uh, moving quite along, uh, well with the, um, combined police and fire dispatching. Officers, um, Patrick Baker, William Mitchell, and Richard Ordway. Each of them, um, are gonna be, uh, well, actually, Pat Baker and William Mitchell are both in police academy right now, Transit Police Academy in Quincy, and Richard Ordway will be going into the Reading Police Academy in January, uh, where they'll be for six months. Uh, the police exam we had this past quarter, we had 200 candidates come out, and so we have a, uh, established list for upcoming, um, hires for the police department in the future, uh, and some great candidates on there, we're really happy about that. The, uh, just yesterday, we had the Assessment Center for Deputy Chief. We had five candidates, internal candidates, participate in this process. We have not gotten the results yet, um, but when we do, we will be in contact with the board. I wanna mention some commendations, um, I know I like to mention some of the good things the officers do over each quarter. Uh, we had a series of them this past quarter. Uh, the first being Ian Tolland, uh, who was involved with, um, a serial bank robbery suspect, um, and, uh, both, uh, multi-state Rhode Island and Massachusetts robberies, uh, and some in the area. We, uh, ultimately, uh, this individual's identified as somebody that was living in Walpole, and, um, Detective Tolland at the time, now Sergeant, um, helped execute, uh, write and execute the search warrants, uh, that went into place in order to identify this person, uh, establish evidence, and then, uh, bring this person, um, in under arrest. They actually got him at a casino in Massachusetts. Uh, but just a great job, they actually recognized Ian down at one of their awards ceremonies recently. Uh, Rich Haber, um, he, a couple of different incidents, one where a, uh, victim had cut themselves, um, uh, and was bleeding profusely, um, Officer Haber was able to, um, apply tourniquet and help, uh, that person. And then another individual that had fell into an asphalt hopper, uh, and Officer Haber was able to, um, administer, uh, his AED and CPR at that time. Uh, he's had a series of these, so, uh, Rich Haber has just, um, really been really good, uh, and professional with how he handles some of these situations. Justin Rohana, uh, one where he received the AAA Traffic Safety Hero Award, uh, for his efforts, uh, if you remember, Justin's only been out of academy for about six months, but he quickly, um, got into traffic enforcement, uh, and they recognized him, uh, with the Traffic Safety Hero Award because of his efforts out there, which is, um, really good for somebody who's, uh, only been on the job for six months. He was also given a commendation, um, for a robbery and stabbing situation where an individual, uh, had left a, a business, uh, and was approached, stabbed a couple of times, uh, handcuffed to a steering wheel, uh, and almost, uh, if it wasn't for a Uber driver, um, could've died in that situation, uh, lost a lot of blood, um, but Officer Rohana was the first one there, and he was able to, uh, quickly, uh, you know, while also paying attention to his surroundings, was able to, uh, uncuff that person, apply tourniquet, and then, um, get the, um, paramedics of the Fire Department down to help out, so he did a great job with that, also a very young officer. Uh, Detective Bethany was involved in a, um, multi-state, uh, human trafficking issue where there was a, a girl from Walpole who, uh, we ended up finding in Florida, uh, who had run away, got into a, um, transient, um, truck, and we were able to, um, locate this person, and Taylor did, worked on it all weekend until she found this girl, um, sixteen-year-old girl, and ultimately, uh, used a ruse in order to get her to, um, kinda come out of the hiding, and she was able to, uh, call the authorities down there and take the person into custody. And then we had a couple situations, um, with officers responding to Longview who've just done a great job down there, Officer Janad Slavin, we had Ness Bird in O'Connor, just doing an amazing job working with the kids down there who, we all know, you know, come from very difficult backgrounds and, um, but, you know, they're Walpole kids that are in our community, and we just do such a great job reaching out to them. One of the things I mentioned in the report was our outreach, and, uh, we did this basketball game with some of the kids down Longview, and while we had a lot of fun playing the game, the most rewarding thing for me was looking at the officers engage with the kids before and after the game, where I actually saw kids going up and hugging some of our off, some of our officers and high-fiving them, and, um, it just tells a lot, like, how much, um, invested they are with that community, um, so I'm very proud of them on how they handle that. And then Walpole PD, um, we got the AAA, uh, Silver Award, we're gonna go for the gold next year, but, uh, that's for our, our, uh, traffic safety efforts. Some of the, uh, we had Community Policing Week, we had, um, a lot of different events, uh, sporting events we attended, we had a bicycle course down at Bird Park, uh, Longview Farm Basketball, Ride to School programs, and, um, you know, our typical stuff, our positive tickets, and now we even have, uh, Tommy Hart and I went out and found a little girl helping shovel today, we have positive Walpole Police, uh, winter hats, which are, should be a big hit. Some of the outreach, um, we did some outreach this past quarter with Junior Women's Club, um, we did some Halloween safety with all the kids in school, giving out the glow sticks, uh, we did Alice Protocol for our seniors, as you know, we've, we've hit the, uh, the schools now, um, and we're pretty much up to date with all of the schools, uh, municipal offices, and, and we also did some stuff with the Council on Aging, um, in our seniors to teach them, you know, what to do in the event of any type of critical incident that might take place, uh, at the senior center. Uh, so a lot of good, um, positive things. One thing I did also make note of, we've had some, several pedestrian crashes, we've had seven, uh, take place this quarter since September, which, uh, is, is unusually high, um, several of those, uh, some serious injuries where we've had crash reconstruction, uh, reconstructing the accident, um, and we're really trying to, uh, focus on some of these areas far as enforcement, crosswalks especially. Uh, we started a new program called Cops at Stops, where we have officers going out to bus stops, we've, we're following school buses, we are, um, paying attention to railroad crossings and kids trespassing on railroad tracks, any of those areas where it's just added, um, hazard, um, especially to our kids and pedestrians, and we're continuously, uh, we're focusing on that, um, but for some reason, we are still having, um, some crashes taking place, uh, and, you know, distracted driving or impaired driving, uh, remains to be a problem. Uh, in fact, after we started this program, we had an individual last week pass a school bus, uh, had actually passed three motor vehicles that were stopped, then the school bus that had its lights on and stop sign out, and then struck another vehicle head-on, uh, and that person was under the influence of drugs at the time, uh, including marijuana and having an open container, so we're trying to do, uh, that enforcement side, trying to do some education side as far as, um, understanding the dangers of impaired driving, distracted driving, uh, and hopefully, uh, as we keep doing this, it will, it'll catch on. The, um, mental health issues can continue to be one of our most significant public safety issues. Um, in 2017, we had 168, 2018, we had 205, and this year, we're gonna, we're on pace to be, uh, break 300 mental health calls, uh, and these are any type of, uh, you know, suicide, suicidal ideation, uh, Section 12, Section 35 type calls, which are involuntary mental health or involuntary drug commitments, um, they are increasing, they're continuing to increase. We have now trained the, um, three-quarters of the police department in crisis intervention training, uh, and that's a week-long, uh, training for officers to be able to identify and recognize mental health issues, and then also, um, integrate some type of communication with, uh, that individual, do an assessment and, and tactics on how to, you know, use proper force, and, uh, when, when the person, um, has to involuntary go to the hospital and that kind of thing. Uh, we're trying to focus on dealing with those underlying issues, and sometimes, um, our response to these are a result of a crime, so we're trying to also divert, um, people that are in a mental health crisis away from the criminal justice system, and trying to use the resources that we have available to try and, um, divert that away from that, that system. Um, and so, uh, it's been a pretty busy quarter. The, um, the one other thing I just wanna mention, my son, um, this past, uh, about eight weeks ago, sustained a serious eye injury, and he's been through multiple surgeries and, um, he's been through a lot, and I just wanna thank people in the community because usually, it's me who's supposed to be the person reaching out, but this time, it's people reaching out to us, and I'm very happy, um, that, you know, Rachel Jackson, the school nurse, and people on his team, and schoolmates, and just people in the community have been so great to my family during this time, and, um, and the board as well, reaching out, asking how things are going, so I just wanna mention that and really appreciate that. I gave you the, uh, statistics for the quarter, um, our, um, as I mentioned, mental health, uh, continues to be an issue, uh, domestic violence, um, and, uh, we did, it, we, we added in Longview again this month, just to give you kind of a, um, uh, gauge of how many times we've responded there, we have responded there, um, I think it says about 378 times this year, um, taken reports on 119 incidents, and we've had 12 arrests. Uh, those incidents also include some of the community policing activity and the outreach that we do, uh, many of them account for, um, kids who are AWOL that run, that run away. This is a perpetual thing with, um, with the community down there, as far as, um, trying to work as a team, and trying to be partnership, and, and, um, you know, work with those kids to get them, uh, you know, to kinda stay in place and everything, and, um, it's, it's an ongoing effort, and, you know, the, um, the staff has been receptive, the officers have been amazing with, uh, their outreach and how they're handling things down there. Um, it is certainly a tax on the resources, um, but it, you know, it's still part of our community, and it's something that, um, that we deal with and we have to deal with. And lastly, the overdoses, um, we are currently at, uh, 29 overdoses for the year, and unfortunately, um, we've had, we've had, uh, six people to succumb to those overdoses, uh, this year, which is, which is high. We are, um, pretty much, uh, you know, we haven't really seen improvement this year as far as our overdoses, and this is despite the efforts of our department, the outreach that we do, getting involved in, now we have Bay State Recovery, our Drug and Alcohol Coalition, um, our partnership with Gate House, um, Recovery up in New Hampshire. We're trying to do a lot of different things, we're trying to get those resources out there. This problem had, is not going away yet, and, um, it's, again, one of those perpetual things where we just have to keep, uh, doing what we're doing and, until it, um, subsides. So, that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Chief, uh, any questions or comments for the Chief?
Just one.
Yeah, uh, thanks, John, for the, for the update. Um, last we spoke, and I can't recall if it was a quarterly updater or what the situation was, but talking about, um, Longview and the responses down there over the last few months, and your comments about, um, you know, coordinating more closely, or, or maybe reassessing the level of coordination, um, with people that you're communicating with down there, um, from the facility, but also possibly at the state level, has any of that come to fruition, or do you, do you, did you get the answers you were looking for, or?
Yes, uh, so we, we've, um, continued to work with Leslie Suggs, who was the, she is the, um, uh, the secretary basically of the Home for Little Wanderers, which is the umbrella group that oversees Longview. Uh, we've worked, we've, uh, met with the staff down there at Longview, we've met with DCF, who, you know, DCF, a lot of times the kids are in DCF custody, so they're transferred through there, uh, and then we also met recently with, um, DC Department of Secondary Education, uh, who, who basically is the licensing authority, uh, and so, they have been very good, they actually sent out a couple of investigators, so we're now able to, um, there's like a communication gap, I think, with, with all the different agencies, you know, different state agencies and entities, so we're trying to all, um, work together with DCF, maybe the DA's office, the police department, with DC, um, and try and have everybody kinda talking to each other. And I'll give you an example, um, you know, like the situation with Florida, you know, that, this, that turned out to be a, a human trafficking, we know that it was a human trafficking issue, um, but there's resources that we can, you know, we can get through DC and through their investigators to help us with situations like that, or even with placement, so when, you know, many times, when you see there's 12 arrests at, at Longview, that doesn't necessarily mean that we've arrested 12 different kids at Longview, that means, that may mean that there's one individual there that's having a difficult time, that's a repeat person that we have to keep dealing with, and in, in those instances, DC and other entities can help us, maybe, maybe that's not the right fit for this individual and maybe transfer them to somewhere else, and, believe it or not, when we, it, it got, uh, the, the calls increased this quarter significantly, and that's really due to clientele, and so it really depends on who's there, and who's there at the specific time. Um, and so those are the things we just have to just keep kinda focusing on.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I mean, and as long as they're being responsive, you know, and, and the communication isn't just coming from you, um, that's, that's great, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Ben. All right, David?
Chief, thanks very much, great report as always, and thanks for the great work you and the team are doing.
And if you, if, if I may, um, I know you asked me last time if we could bring, uh, Officer Hart and his sidekick Rebel in, for a quick introduction.
That'd be awesome.
I can't say enough about these two, the, the dynamic duo here, uh, you know, Officer Hart, um, our school, one of our school resource officers, and, uh, as you know, we got Rebel from Golden Opportunities for Independence a couple of years ago, and, uh, it was a home run, like, we weren't sure how, how this was all gonna work, but, um, Tommy and Rebel, as far as our community policing outreach and efforts, um, has absolutely done wonders, uh, and you see the, uh, impact that it's had, especially with, with kids, social, emotional issues in the schools and whatever it might be, we've documented incident after incident of how, um, they've helped turn things around in the community, and it's great, so I really appreciate everything that these two do.
It's awesome, could we bring Rebel up, so, uh, get some FaceTime on camera here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, look at her. What a beautiful girl, I gotta do this.
My favorite was the Officer Hart, uh, Halloween costume, that was pretty good.
The khakis and the moustache.
No, no. Her Halloween costume, I kinda underestimated her size, she was a teddy bear, but it didn't exactly fit.
Well, I, I liked the, uh, young boy that was dressed up as you.
Oh, yes, yes. I think he did a better job than me, so.
That was pretty awesome.
Take Mike's job pretty soon.
Well, thank you for bringing her in, thanks for everything you're doing with her, that's great. Chief, thanks again. All right, uh, next we've got Chief Bailey for the Fire Department Quarterly Update. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, last time I was before you was on September 3rd, uh, since then, uh, year-to-date, 3,351 emergency calls, we're within 50 of our high for last year, uh, with three weeks to go, so, um, I don't see that being any lower. Uh, 3,077 inspections and permits, 6,428 calls total for service, or 19.1 calls per day. Uh, we had 13 structure fire, uh, 13 fires in structures, uh, since our last meeting, uh, one serious structure fire. Uh, this past week, uh, we had the gas leak over at 767 E Street, which, uh, caused some, uh, chaos, uh, in the morning hours, uh, and to get that rectified, uh, and as Chief Carl Michael mentioned, we had several med flights over the last, uh, quarter. Ambulance receipts, uh, I do not have November's numbers, but prior to that, uh, since July, 495,00338, current balance of 1,187, 187. Uh, both ambulances are operating at the ALS level, and I did the numbers today of the 559 calls, they're within three calls of, uh, each other, so they're basically 50-50 on going out the door, so, um, budget, no issues at this time. On the Capitol front, the am, new ambulance has been ordered that was, uh, approved at town meeting. The brush truck that was, uh, approved a year ago is almost complete, uh, we're actually going to Pennsylvania, my mechanic's going down tomorrow for a site inspection, uh, to make sure that everything's the way it's supposed to be before it's shipped up here, so that should be up here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the boat, uh, was in, but when we inspected it, it had been damaged, so they are getting us another one, and that'll be in, with, in with the next couple of weeks. And we're working on the other items of the Capitol, which was the gear, uh, the, um, tactical, uh, gear, uh, both of those gear issues, uh, we're working on currently. Uh, detail billing, uh, still is in very good shape, uh, since we took that over in 2016, uh, we have billed out 431,397. The AFG Grant, which is the grant that I keep mentioning, uh, the Wellness and Fitness Grant, that has been completed now, we've wrapped that up, and, uh, we're moving on to the next, uh, grant, which will be coming out, uh, hopefully shortly, and we'll be applying for, uh, something at that point, we're not sure exactly which way we're gonna go with that yet. Safe Grant, uh, we've used up the money, money that we had, and again, we're waiting for the, the additional funding to come back in for that, we've, uh, applied for that again, as we have every year, uh, that's a team that visits the schools every year during Fire Prevention Week, and they deal with the kindergarteners and first graders in teaching them fire prevention, fire safety. Senior Safe, uh, that's an ongoing program, we still have grant monies available in that program. On the fire prevention, uh, front, Deputy Barry's still extremely busy with all the, uh, building that's going on in town, and as that starts to come to be, uh, going from the construction phase to the near occupancy phase, that'll actually go up, and his workload will increase significantly, uh, with all the inspections that are required. Um, Fire Alarm, which I don't normally report on, but I will give you a quick update, uh, we have a lot of double poles in town, on Washington Street specifically, you'll notice there's a lot of double poles that were put in about two to three years ago, all of those have been transferred, we've made them, uh, notified them that those have been transferred from our end, which is a, a key sticking point for them, usually in order for them to get those poles out of there so that there's only one left, so, uh, we're working on the rest of them, clearing those up, uh, throughout town, we have about 168 of those that, uh, remain, and we're working those, uh, pretty diligently as, as time allows. Uh, on the apparatus, the towel ladder is in service, that went into service about three weeks ago, the new engine four, uh, we had hoped to put in service this week, but we're missing a few, uh, components, and they, uh, were shipped out, and hopefully that'll be in service next week. Uh, the new, new brush truck I already mentioned, uh, will be in, uh, in the next couple of days. Uh, on training, uh, the towel ladder training from the manufacturer was completed, as I, uh, reported back in September, we're gonna wait until the end of the year to see if I had any, have any money left in my budget to try to secure, uh, some more training for that on the advanced level, so we'll run the truck for the next couple of months, the guys are very, um, very good at, uh, the operation of it now, it's more of a tactical aspect and different things that we can do with it, and we'll wait until the good weather in the spring to try to do that. Also on the training front, uh, we had OEMS, uh, which is our governing body for the ambulance, had some more protocol changes that came out, those were, uh, trained on and implemented on 10-1. Uh, we had four members that went to an EMS for Children Education and Simulation Day at Boston Medical Center, this was an eight-hour hands-on day that they went in there for, which was very beneficial. Uh, we had sexual harassment training for the entire department, new building familiarizations continue, uh, as, uh, we can get into the structures. Uh, we did meter training with all of our groups, which we carry a bunch of different types of meters, uh, for gas emergencies, uh, also for firefighting for CO, uh, as in residential, uh, that, we did some, uh, meter training on that, natural gas and propane training, we had our BLS refresher for all of our EMTs that are EMTs, not medics, we currently still have 11 of us, uh, that are at, at that level. We had ketamine training, which is again on, for the EMS folks on the paramedic side, we had high-rise kit and standpipe operations in anticipation for the, um, what will be required when these new larger structures come online, and we have, uh, a whole crew going over tomorrow to Westwood to train at the Foxel Village, uh, they have a vacant building over there that, uh, they've invited us over to participate. On the personnel front, firefighter EMT, now paramedic, O'Neil, has finished his paramedic and got certified, uh, he's one of the ones that we hired that was in process that, uh, and that has worked out very well. Injuries, we had three injuries when I was here last time, two of those injuries have returned, one is still out, we had another firefighter that got injured yesterday, so I'm not sure how long he'll be out, but, uh, it doesn't look too serious, but we'll see how that goes, and I'll keep the board up to date. And, uh, in the community front, we had our open house in October, which is another success, and we participated, uh, with the Santa Parade on Saturday.
So, aside from that, not much going on, huh, Chief?
Been busy.
Yeah, I guess you have, Ben. Any questions or comments for the Chief?
Not right now, thanks.
Yeah, I, I just have two, um, first off, you know, I saw you down at your open house, and I brought my son Will down, um, that was excellent, I really appreciate you doing that, um, it was fun for him, it was educational, uh, the place was packed, uh, for most of the hour that we were there, so that's just fantastic outreach, I think people really enjoyed it, people really appreciated it, seeing the new, um, the new tower truck and all the other new equipment, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then also, um, just in reference to your discussions on training, and I know you talked about training last time as well, um, just that, um, you know, I'm very supportive of that, I, I know that the board in general is, but it's so critical to the continued on, ongoing development of all of our personnel, so to the extent that we can support you in that, um, you know, I encourage it, so, thank you for those updates.
Thank you.
One question for you on, uh, the inspections, you, you mentioned that as we move from the build phase to the occupy phase, your inspections are gonna go up in volume, any concerns about being able to keep up with that volume, Chief?
Um, I have concerns, but we make it happen, so, I mean, it's, it's a time-sensitive issue, uh, we work hand-in-hand with the building department, and the deputy has to literally go and, and, we inspect all the sprinkle systems, all the fire alarm systems, he has to go into every unit, uh, just as the building folks do, so, it's just time-consuming, and as long as they don't all come in at the same time, we do what we can with it, I'll assign extra personnel if I have to, so, participate myself, so.
Well, thank you, great update as always, and again, to you and the team, thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, uh, 7:30, we have a, uh, change of manager for Applebee's to Carl Ernest Enberg, is Mr. Enberg here? Okay, then we will go without any discussion on the change of manager materials?
Oh, looks good.
That was my sense as well, so can I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the change of manager for Applebee's to Carl Ernest Enberg Jr.
I'll second that.
Further discussion being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, for, uh, 3, 1, 0. Okay, next up, we have, uh, Marilyn coming to talk to us on the MWRA borrowing request, so.
Marilyn? Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you, you too. Um, this is the borrowing papers from the MWRA for the, um, application we submitted and was approved at the Fall Town Meeting for 159,900... Yeah, 159,500 dollars, this is Phase 10 of the, um, the system, the system projects, and Phase 11 will come at another time, they're doing them in sections at this point. So I have some papers that need to be signed.
And this is Article 13 voted at the most recent, uh, town meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, uh, any questions for Marilyn?
Nope.
Who's the clerk?
Okay, so there's a vote that needs to be approved... Okay, so there's a vote that needs to be approved. It can be either read or done as written. Maybe you want to just sign it.
Okay.
Or you can read it. Doesn't matter.
Do you have a preference on reading?
Well, in saving time, I just, as written, I've got counsel that says it doesn't have to be read.
All right, great.
Approved as written.
Sure.
Approved as written.
Close it? That's good, yeah. Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve as written the sale of the hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollar sewer bond of the town dated December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero.
Do you want me to sign all of these documents, right?
Right, there's four here, there's that one, and then it's only these four sheets. Just go to the next one.
Are we signing all of, all the pages?
Oh, I didn't miss.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Marilyn, are we signing all the, all the...
Yeah, there's four there.
Four, there's four.
Okay, okay. One out. Next, then.
Didn't there's a second motion here, Marilyn? David's just a green, the green guy is. So did you say there was a second motion?
Looks that way, yeah.
Marilyn, do we, do we have a second motion? It looks like we do.
No, it's usually just the vote.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
As long as we're good, okay. Next up, we had a candidate coming and seeking appointment of the PON committee who can't make it tonight. So we'll pick that up at a future date. And I guess I'm moving on, but I assume we're all set?
We're all set.
Okay, thank you. I think it's worth mentioning, though, that the PONS committee has had three members of the committee resign recently. And so we could use some candidates for PONS committee. It's a very important committee, so just for the public to know. Okay, we're a little ahead of schedule. Phil, if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and go with you. So next up, we've got Phil Chegrowski seeking a vote from the board to initiate steps for the town to apply for Massachusetts Green Communities and Grant Program. So Phil's going to take us through what that's all about for a few minutes, and then we'll have some discussion.
Do you have a handout? I could just pass it out to everyone, just to... Actually, I have a, I have the slides I was going to show, and I have...
So is that in addition to...
I don't know.
The other materials?
That's correct. It's a more condensed version, and also it brings us to where we want to go. So first of all, thank you.
I think he's turned on the projector, or is he, he's in the process of...
Oh.
Do you want to go grab that from Patrick?
Someone bring that remote up from Patrick. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. High-tech, right? There were just two slides I particularly wanted to show you because they're so, they're so compelling. So first of all, thank you on behalf of Wapo Green. Myself and Gene Duffy were co-chairs of Wapo Green. We're a group of citizens who are working very hard to bring Wapo to be more environmentally sound, but also more, most importantly, to address the climate change and reduce our energy consumption. And that's all in keeping with the Massachusetts Global Warming Solutions Act, which we're, you know, we're, as many, every other town in Massachusetts have an obligation to help meet that. So first of all, I just want to acknowledge how much Wapo's already done. I won't go through all of this, but Wapo has already taken the lead in many areas. Wapo passed a very important resolution in two thousand and sixteen, as did the Board of Selectmen, to oppose the gas pipeline. That was a major step going forward. And then at the last town meeting, Wapo Town Meeting passed a resolution with setting a, it's a non-binding resolution, setting a goal to be a hundred percent renewable energy at the municipal level by two thousand and fifty. Again, that was just aspirational. And then, but, but for more concrete things, Wapo has taken the lead, the Photovoltaic district. We have three large farms, which is actually yielding a considerable amount of income to the town. That's a, that's a, that's actually more than lots of towns have done. The library is lead, has a gold lead building. And, you know, also the fact that we're offering the Choice Green. So I just want to acknowledge that because we do, we do appreciate the fact that, you know, the Wapo leadership is, is coming forth and doing what, what we can do as a town to, to address climate change, but also to save money for the town. So being energy efficient is, saves money for the, you know, for our, for our own town. So what we're asking for tonight is to take the first step to pass an article that would, that would accept the stretch building code. And that's one of the five criteria that's needed in order for Wapo to become a green community or to be accepted into the Green Communities Program. And the reason why we're asking to do the building code tonight is because the, you can, towns can only apply once a year to become a green community. So the next, next time is November. So if we don't do something now to, to stage the requirements, the criteria for November, then we'd be another year away. And I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes why there's such a benefit to Wapo. So the, the stretch building code requires a resolution at town meeting, I'm sorry, an article at town meeting, fifty, it's a, it's a majority, not a, not a two-thirds vote. And it would be, we feel that's the long pole, if you will, to getting, getting to, to, to the, the, applying as the green communities. So the Green Communities Program, which is offered by the state of Massachusetts, it offers significant revenue to the town when you get accepted. There are five criteria that the town has to accept. And the first one is, is, has to have as-of-right siding for renewable energy, alternate energy generation. And also, the second one, have an adopt and expedited twelve-month application permitting process. We believe, and we're confirming this with Lisa Sullivan, who's the Southeast Coordinator, that our overlay district for the Photovoltaic complies to these first two. So our understanding is that we've, we've already have reached, have accomplished both of those, although, again, we need to confirm that. And I talked to Lisa, Jean has talked to Lisa a couple of times. And she's going to look over our zoning bylaws and, and the overlay district definition just to confirm that with people on the state side.
And on that point, when I, as I read through these, and you gave us quite a homework assignment, I have to say, Phil.
Yeah, I'm tired of me on that, yep.
But as I read through it, my reading of the zoning thing, the number two, was it's, it's not so much adopt and expedited twelve-month process, but it's that there's nothing that would interfere with a twelve-month process being accomplished.
That, that is correct.
Is that right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we, and we just need legal counsel to, to attest to that.
Okay.
That's just a letter from our legal counsel saying that. That's absolutely correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Then the third one is to establish an energy use baseline with a plan to reduce the baseline by twenty percent over five years. And I know talking to Jim, you know, that he's already doing a lot of monitoring of what our energy usage is. And this is actually a good, a good objective that we would probably want to do anyways. So that, and, and by the way, there's, there's funding available to do this. And there's also tools that the state offers, and there's a number, number of options for that. And then four is purchasing few efficient vehicles, but only where, where it's, it's practical and where it makes sense. So for example, emergency vehicles are exempt. Large trucks are exempt. So there's, there's quite a range of exemptions. And, and what's considered now energy efficient is not, is not electric. It's really, they, they have miles per gallon. So it's, it's like twenty to twenty-four miles per gallon. So a lot of vehicles that we have probably already fit in that category just because the car manufacturers have gotten more efficient. And then the last one, and this is the one with the, the building, you're accepting the, the stretch building code, is that the town has to accept that. And for us, it would be accepting it at town meeting. So this came before the town some number of years ago. I couldn't remember exactly what year, Jim, you may, you may remember.
I'd say seven to nine years ago.
Years ago, yeah, so it was quite a while ago. But what's, what's happened since that time is two things. One, the base building code has, has moved up. So the difference between the base code and the stretch code is a lot smaller. And second, before, the, the stretch code was very prescriptive. It told exactly what a developer had to do for windows or insulation. Now it uses something called HERS, which is Home Energy Rating System. So it sets a, a number of how, how efficient a house has to be. And the developer has full, full control over what they do to reach that. So, so they don't, they're not, they don't have to do any particular thing as long as they reach that number. And in fact, the major cost to be, to becoming, to meeting the zoning, the, the stretch code, is paying for a consultant who actually does the, the, the rating. And that, it's not exorbitant by any means. And we're going to show in a couple of minutes that, that, the state has eight sample, example houses of different types. And it shows what the payback period is. And it's, and within two or three years, the homeowner is actually getting significant money back because the cost of getting there is fairly, fairly low. So the benefits, I won't go, I, I'm going to try to go a little fast, but if you, so I won't go through all these things. But, but certainly the big one is getting a, a, a community grants, so getting grants from the state. But it also is a good way to promote more efficient energy in the town, not just among town departments, but also to the, to the population as a whole. It's a good example to set. And it increases the messages that, that the town is making to the population, to our residents, that they should be more, you know, aware of being energy efficient. And it's the decisions they can make that can, can get us there. So the, the first thing that we're going to see as far as if we became a green community is that they give a designated grant. And that grant, when you get accepted to the program, starts off at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then it, it goes up depending on your population. And when we talked to the last, the, the prior Southeast Coordinator, he was estimating between a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So again, that, that would be something that, that Lisa would, would, would confirm. And then after that, each year, towns can apply for what they call competitive grants. And we're going to see that Westwood, who's been in the program since two thousand and twelve, has got a total of one point two million dollars through these grants. So, so there is a fair amount of opportunity here to get a couple hundred thousand dollars per year. So what can the money be used for? It can be used for retrofitting buildings, for studying, doing evaluations. It can be used for, for setting policies. The one thing it can't be set for is to build a new building. But it's, it's, so it's all around making buildings that you already have more efficient. But it's fairly, fairly lenient. And you'll, you'll see, if you look at the example of the, the grants that are given, it's, it's very wide open what, what towns have...
So, so when, when I was going through that part, one thought that came in my head is, you know, we've got the, the, the old town hall, the townhouse.
Yep.
And one of the questions we have about that is weather type, winterizing, heat, all that kind of stuff. Would, would any of these grants be applicable to that kind of activity?
Any grant in the Green Communities Act could be used for that because that's retrofitting an existing building. So, and, you know, whether it be a new heating system.
Right.
Windows, insulation, tightening up the building, doors. So all, all of those would fall under this, this grant system.
Thanks.
So it's very, very flexible. And, and it also can be used to help manage the, the, the project, although a lot of towns don't use it for them. But that's another, another option. I think it's up to ten percent. So this is an example, this is the grants that were from two thousand and nineteen. I know you're not going to be able to read that, but, but it, it just gives a, a range of some of the, some of the, what some of the towns are doing. And this, one of the interesting ones that you might be interested in is some towns are, have purchased the electric streetlights. The, you know, the, the streetlights from, say, EverSource, and then use the grant money to install LED lights. And then actually save a bundle of money because electrical costs are so low. Because of the utility companies don't have an incentive to replace all the streetlights with LEDs. But if we own the lights, we would have a... So that, there's actually a couple of places where you'll see that towns have done that. Lighting is, is a big one because certainly that's one of the easiest ways to, to save electricity with LED lights. But insulation, there's a lot of grants been given out for, for the heating systems. And, you know, the heating systems are a lot more efficient than they were, you know, five, ten, particularly, you know, you go beyond that age. And then I mentioned Westwood. These are the grants that Westwood was, was granted since two thousand and twelve. And it adds up to about one point two million dollars. So they, they've been, you know, very, very aggressive in, in applying. So what's interesting about the Green Communities Program, this is one reason why we feel really it's important for, for Wapo to take this step now, is that we're way behind in thinking about applying for this. So right now, there are two hundred and forty towns who've been accepted. There are thirty more that will probably be accepted in February. That they've, they've, they've applied in November, and there'll be, probably all of them will be accepted in November. So we're talking about two hundred and seventy towns out of three hundred and fifty-one. And if you look at the map, you'll see where Wapo is. We're, we're fairly surrounded, except for the, to the southern part there. But to the, the east and the north and the west, we're pretty... I don't think this will show. It was, all the towns are around us. And, and in the next slide, this shows you the towns that have adopted the stretch code. And you see here, even more towns around us have, have accepted the stretch code. And that's why, you know, some, some developers will, will, you know, worried, they're concerned, well, we won't be competitive in Wapo if we have a more stringent building code. But if all the towns around us have to do the same thing, then that's really a non-issue. And that, and that's what I really believe. It's, it's not going to be a, be a problem. So, so it's two hundred and seventy-eight municipalities right now have adopted the, the stretch code. And as I said, there are eight examples on the, the Mass Green Communities webpage. And I tried to put a lot of the, the pages in there, but the, there's just a relative information on their, their webpage. But the eight examples show different, different buildings. So this is a house, oil heat, twenty, twenty-five hundred square feet. It was in Rooster. And this shows you the additional cost by, by following the stretch code and then how the, that's... you the additional cost by following the stretch code, and then how the, that's offset. One is offset by rebates, which are, you know, if you just get a better heating system, then you're going to get a rebate. And then there's a positive cash flow, because you're saving, they're saving on their utility bills. So the total cost was about $4,000. And again, a lot of that was for the Air HERS consultant company that has to come in and do the testing. And then the actual cost compared to the base code was just $2,400. And you can see with the year one cash flow of $282, that went to year two, five, over $500 per year. It doesn't take long to pay that back. And then the next slide shows you what they did compared to the base code. And one thing that's very interesting here is that you'll see with the bottom part, floors, walls, lighting, that there was no change, because that's because the base code and the stretch code are the same. They didn't have to do anything more for those things, because the codes are very similar. They could get those efficiencies through the top things, which is the more efficient oil furnace, the air conditioning, and so forth. So this is just, you know, one example showing, you know, that the costs are very reasonable. So what we were recommending, and we know that, you know, there's a lot of steps to becoming a green communities, but we think it's really important that we take this first step and get on the town war, the acceptance of the stretch building code. And what we're recommending first is that Lisa Sullivan, who's the Green Communities Coordinator for the Southeast Region, she's willing to come in and present to the select board. She's also willing to help us host some sessions for the public and answer questions, and that could be done in many ways. So having public forums. Then there's, and Walpo Green, we're willing to help wherever we can in spreading the message, documenting things, or doing publicity. So any way we can help, we are very open to that. There's a lot of additional information on their webpages. So certainly, as we go forward, you are going to want to study this more. You know, Jim, the town departments, we want to know more what the impact is going to be. But we don't believe that should stop us from at least doing this first step. And then last, we're asking you to be the ones to sponsor the article for the Spring Town Meeting War. And if you don't feel you can do it, and, you know, again, we don't want to put undue pressure on you, but we feel so compelled that we need to move this forward. So our citizens group would then, we would then do a citizen's petition to put it on the war. But we must prefer this to come from the select board and from the town.
Okay, well, thank you, Phil. I appreciate the presentation. Questions for Phil?
And Jean.
And Jean. Sorry, Jean.
I mean, I think the stretch code is kind of a no-brainer from my point of view. I guess I would like to see the board of selectmen propose that. You know, again, I can only speak for myself. You know, some of the other things that you mentioned are pretty interesting as you go forward. And certainly, I'd love to see, maybe in a workshop setting, some more discussion on some of those topics, and how they actually, you know, it sounds like we are a little behind some of the other towns, but find out more about what the other towns actually did, what do the numbers look like. I mean, it looks like we can save money with this at a fairly good pace. So in addition to everything else you said, I'm sort of zeroing in on the money piece, but it'd be great if we could get some people who have been through this to talk us through some of those things. I wouldn't do it at a regular board of selectmen meeting, just because we're usually very tight timewise, but maybe in a workshop setting and invite some of the other boards to come in, and interested parties to kind of get involved and see what's happening.
And Jean has talked to?
I've talked to Westwood's energy manager. And he's very experienced, very skilled, and he's saved the town significant money. And I think you've seen some of the projects that they've done.
Yeah.
And you haven't seen the solar that they've done. He's willing to talk to anyone.
And that's exactly what I'd like to see us do, is talk to the people that have really done it and get our people involved, and, you know, learn more about it, make a conscious decision to move forward, you know, assuming we do, with everybody sort of on board, so.
What we haven't done, because not in all cases has that been given to us, is we've given you what the Green Community Grant was, what any utility incentives were, what the town paid, but we didn't give you the savings as a result of it. And I noticed that as we're going through. But as you talk to these people, and I've spoken to about ten energy people in various towns, they can tell you that. They can tell you that.
And you also mentioned getting somebody from another town to speak with us. That's really where we can build a comfort factor with, you know, the ideas that we're talking about. So that'd be great.
Thanks, Mark. Ben?
Yeah, and I think, I guess first of all, thank you for coming in and doing this, giving this presentation, putting all this information together. I think so often, people and even residents of Walpo, their questions, or their concerns, I should say, are driven by all of the questions they have and the lack of information. So I think it's incredibly informative to understand what has already been done in Walpo to be green, and how far along the town already is on the criteria for approval to enter into the program, and the ability to get the money to perform these projects. And I know that one of the shortfalls, if there is a shortfall in some of the new building construction that we've done, is the fact that it isn't green. And that in an effort to be efficient with costs, in an effort to be reasonable at town meeting and understanding with taxpayers, there were items that were cut from those projects. That it would be great to be able to go back now, get the money through this program, and be able to perform that. It would be huge, and it would make a lot of difference. It would save a lot of money, as you said. So I think it's fantastic. I would be in favor of the board certainly sponsoring the article on the stretch building code. And I had reached out myself to a handful of developers in the region that I know I'm friendly with. And they all said the same thing, which was not only is it not a showstopper when it comes to development, that they've actually found ways to work within it and even go beyond it and make more money. And so that's to the benefit of the towns, the benefit of the residents, the homeowners, and the developers. So there's a lot of positives here. So thank you again for bringing this forward.
David?
Yeah, a couple of things. I mean, the added price to construction doesn't seem very high. And nowadays, it seems like something that buyers are actually looking for, to see that in their houses when they're buying them. So I think it could be a bonus to someone selling those houses. Also, looking at the grants programs, many of the grants are for new street lighting. We had the chief in here earlier saying there are more pedestrian accidents. I know one of them was in the evening over out near Tessie's place. So better lighting on the streets, if we could use that money for that. And I know at least some of the schools need new boilers. So some of that money can be used through that. So I don't see it, I see this as a pretty good program. Appreciate you bringing it forward.
Jim, one other, and I don't want to put Jim on the spot here, but has there been any feedback, or any feedback really, from you or from any of the town personnel on this? Positive, negative, ambivalent?
No, not really. Phil, I spoke this afternoon, and I had a brief conversation with the Building Commissioner, Mike Yanovich. That's why I have him sitting out in the audience here. And my initial thought was, well, is there much of a difference now between the current nationally accepted building codes, what Mike adheres to, versus the stretch code? And quite honestly, Mike brought me up to speed that, no, there's not much of a difference right there. I think I agree with Mark. As far as the stretch code, my concern is the cost associated with the Green Communities, but that's something that you don't have to go to the Green Communities. We can go to the stretch code, and then the board can decide what you want to do, if you want to go to the Green Communities, so.
Yeah, so my take on it is, I think it's a good idea. You and I chatted a couple of times about this over the last couple of months, Phil, and I've encouraged you to bring it forth, and I think it's a very good idea. And nothing that I've heard or read, again, thanks for the homework assignment, nothing I've heard or read has caused me to think anything different. I will say that I would be very interested in doing a workshop so that we could get really smart about this. There is a lot of stuff here. And so I would like to do, take that step. But again, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be willing to, or at least speaking for me, willing to sponsor the article as you're suggesting it. And then let's get the follow-through. I think the trick to this kind of thing is engagement, in getting people educated on what it is and what it isn't. So that when we get to the point of town meeting, a lot of that discussion has already taken place, and we're not educating people on the floor of town meeting. So I think that would be the real trick now, is to say, how do we get that process going? How do we do the community outreach? How do we make sure that we're talking to people that have done it before? You know, can we talk about, you know, you mentioned Westwood had some significant benefits. What exactly is that? And let's use that as part of the education, you know, experience. So I'm very supportive of it, and thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, of course.
And like I said, we're very willing to help in any way, as far as public outreach, arranging meetings. We also have a number of other suggestions. I wasn't going to go into tonight, but that would be another time.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate at the workshop.
Yeah.
Because we're seeing what other towns have done in conjunction with this to make it really work.
Right.
And that's also good to know. There's really, I think it's really a good opportunity for Walpo to take a lead and, you know, not only help our climate issues, but also reduce our costs.
Yeah.
Good example to our residents.
Both are worthwhile things to do. So, yeah, so again, thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to initiate the steps for the town to apply to the Mass Green Communities and Grant Program.
So could I suggest we take a step away from that? That's sort of the big, bold vision.
I would make a motion that we would, the board of selectmen would sponsor an article for the stretch code at the next town meeting. Didn't mean to cut you off there, Ben. Sorry.
No. So Ben, you were there first. What are your thoughts on what Mark just suggested?
Yeah, I don't see why we can't do both.
And Mark, what's your concern about doing both?
I don't know what the other steps are. That's sort of the whole workshop thing for me. It's a no-brainer to do stretch. And I'd love to see a workshop or two to talk about all of the other issues.
Yeah.
So when we make another motion to go forward with something else, we really know what it is. And I understand you gave us a lot of info, and I went out to a few of those links. But to me, that's sort of the big picture. Again, just speaking for myself.
What you're really after today is getting support of the warrant article.
Yes, because we think that's going to be the biggest timeframe issue. So if we get that in the spring, you know, the Spring Town Meeting, there's more time to do the other things. We're certainly in favor of doing the whole thing now, but.
Well, I think you're hearing a lot of support on the board to do it, but I also think you're hearing that there are questions, right?
Yeah.
And so those could be addressed through the workshops.
The highest priority is the stretch code, because it'd be good to get that on the Spring Town War and get it done with. If it was on the Fall Town War, that gets very close to the application date, and they really frown upon that.
No, I think we should go for the Spring Town Meeting.
Yeah.
And the application process, there's a bit to it also. So, you know, even if it was a closed state, still to go through that application process.
Right, right. Okay, makes sense. So Ben, are you okay with going forward with the warrant article sponsorship?
So the application to the Green Communities and Grant Program would take place November of 2020?
It'd be, so yeah, the application's put in October, and the end date is November to get everything in.
I think it's early October.
So in terms of steps, in terms of steps?
So that's earliest we could do it right now. We've missed the 2019 date.
Right, right. So in terms of steps, we would do Spring Town Meeting, warrant, stretch, and then at a meeting after that, should that pass, we could then undertake the application of the Green Communities and Grant Program. And that wouldn't leave us with any deficit of time to do it in May, rather than starting now.
Say, ask again?
If we voted now just to go to Spring Town Meeting with the stretch code, and we waited until some other point in 2020 to initiate the steps to apply to the Green Communities Grant Program, are we leaving ourselves too small a window?
No, as long as, as long as criteria one and two, we've already met, then nothing else has to go to the town meeting to change something. We should be, all that can be done internally within the town.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
And select board. So.
And the application process is out on the Green Communities website.
Yeah.
Good news about coming in at this stage in the process is so many people have been ahead of us. So there's all these best practices out there. There's how to go about the application process. So there's really a lot of help for the website.
And if you, if we do it, and I think this year it was October 6th, they were actually review your application ahead of time, to make sure it meets all the requirements before you actually submit it. You know, they will help you get there. So but to answer your question, Ben, yes, if we do, the big one is the town meeting for the stretch code. After that, we should be able to fit everything in over the course of the year, with no other timeline issues.
Yeah. Well, if people would desire to have this workshop before voting on that, then it won't leave us short of time. I don't see why not.
I would prefer that, if you don't mind.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I'd prefer that. But I'm also happy to see that workshop happen early in the year. Let's not wait till September. Maybe we can schedule that in late January, early February.
The town should keep moving on this. We shouldn't wait till May or June or.
Shoot for January.
Yeah.
See if we can get it done in January.
And we can help do that if you want, whatever that, whatever you'd like it to be or not, you know, for us, but.
Yeah, sure. David?
And do we know that we don't need anything further for the expedited permitting part, or do we?
So we're going to send to Lisa our zoning bylaw, the map of our, yeah, our solar overlay district.
Okay.
And she's going to have her landpeople take a look at that and get back to us.
Okay.
If they're good with it, and she thinks it is, but we just want to make sure. If that came back now, then we would figure it out. But everybody, I think, is pretty optimistic about that.
When does the warrant close?
January 26.
Twenty?
Last meeting in January. So just, so.
We're looking to get the answer within a week.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So do I have to retract my motion, because I went before him? How's that work?
I think if you just make another motion, we'll be fine.
Well, Mark made a motion.
All right. So, and you're okay with his motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second Mark's motion, then. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to working with you on this, okay?
Sure.
Do you want to mention that on the Green Communities webpage, they have the sample text for the article. So they, you know, so they've done it. That's all they are.
Thank you, Mr.
Very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Jim may reach back to you when that warrant article is starting to be written up, so.
Like I said, we're willing to do anything we can to, you know.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our appointments for this evening, after eight o'clock. So we'll go to open forum next. Is there anybody here who is interested in speaking at open forum? Okay, nobody. So we'll move on to new business. We have several votes to make under new business.
Good night. Yeah, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
You want to lead us through the votes?
All right. To make a motion to renew the wine and malt package store licenses as listed in documents 12-5.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
I would make a motion to renew the all alcohol package store licenses for these establishments listed in document 12-6.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
I'd make a motion to renew the all alcohol common vics- I would make a motion to renew the all alcohol common victualers licenses for these establishments listed in document 12-7.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero.
I would make a motion to renew the wine and malt common victualers licenses for these establishments in document 12-8.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero.
I would make a motion to renew the all alcohol common victualers club licenses for those establishments listed in document 12-9.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero.
Make a motion to renew the Sunday entertainment licenses for those establishments listed in document 12-10.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero. Okay, that knocks out the new business. Nothing under all business. We've now got the consent agenda. David, you want to take us through that?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set? Okay, Ben?
I'd make a motion to accept with thanks the following gifts. Anonymous gift to COA, $5,000. John and Eunice Morrison Foundation gift to COA of $5,000.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero. Those are two tremendous donations to the COA. Thank you to both of the donors. All right, we're on to the town administrators' update now. Jim?
Okay, few things here. A couple of weeks ago, you guys talked about the 300th anniversary, so I took a, took a look at what some other towns do with some anniversaries. I just did a quick search online, so I looked at Plymouth, which is very extensive. They had legislation established, obviously that's a lot bigger. They have 31 board members, four associate members, eight honorary members, and five full-time staff members, so I don't think we're looking to do something that extensive. But their charge, their website's there, just kind of the committee makeup. Bellingham did something back in 2019 for their, they didn't have a mission online. Hopkinton did something for their 300, like listed out their committee. Watley, 250, a lot smaller obviously, but kind of the same idea. They're coming up in 2021. They got six members, they call it a steering committee, they have a charge there. Holden did something back in 2016 with six members for their 275th celebration. So what I did is, just some comments on this, I'd suggest the board have five to seven members on that committee. I know a lot of people probably want to be on it, but we don't want to have it too big to kind of hinder the committee's progress and meeting expectations. I drafted a charge which reads as follow. I called it Walpole 300. Walpole 300 is charged with planning, coordinating, preparing, and recommending to the Board of Selectmen a program, it actually will be select board, so I'll change that, a program of celebrations to commemorate Walpole 300th anniversary in 2024, which incorporates the ideas, ideals of the citizens of Walpole to implement recommendations approved by the Board of Selectmen. Walpole 300 will develop a celebratory plan, including a timeline for celebration, proposed events, publicity plan, volunteer roster, funding requirements, funding sources, and oversight of festivities. The committee will coordinate with other entities within town government, including police chief, fire chief, town administrator, historical commission, school department, et cetera, to ensure the broadest possible inclusion of areas in participation. The committee will endeavor to engage the entire community in the planning process and beyond. So that's just a draft. I'd like some feedback from you folks as to, you know, do you like it? Do you want to make some changes? Because I think what my takeaway from the board a few weeks ago was that you want to get moving on this and form something within the next couple of months, so take any feedback you may have on this.
So you went through that kind of quickly. Did you have provisions in there for, you know, identifying any funding needs that might require town meeting approval, that kind of thing?
Not at this time, but I can certainly add that in there.
You know, I think it's, one of the reasons that it's important to get going on this now is because, you know, 2024 is the 300th, but if we are looking to, and of course, it'd be up to the committee to figure this out, but if we're looking to do anything that's going to cost money, we're going to want to go through a couple of budgeting cycles so we put a piece here and a piece there, so we can tee up, you know, a budget for the 300th committee as we get into, you know, the 2023, 24 timeline. And so I think it's important to call that out only because I would like the committee to realize that, or to understand that that's something we're looking for, for input, so that we can incorporate into the budgeting process. Does that make sense?
Sure. I can certainly add something.
Some, just some kind of reference.
Identifying funding needs that may be required via town meeting appropriation.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Other comments for Jim?
I do kind of like the idea that Plymouth had 48 people working on it. But I think that's a little too much for us, so. I like your idea, Jim, around six people I think would be a great way to go. And then there could certainly be other people who are involved in, you know, aspects of it, so I think it'd be great.
Well, if you remember back to that stuff Ted Hagler sent to us, they had, they had a number of committees.
Yep.
Were involved. Plus they engaged existing committees, like the Historical Commission, so you'd sort of expect that we would engage, you know, broadly in the town. But maybe another thing that we should include in the charge is that if there's a need for some form of subcommittee, that we, you know, we could incorporate that in as well and have that committee come back and establish that.
Okay. So if you guys could maybe look this over next week or so, give me your comments, and I'll have a revised draft next week, and I'll send it out with your weekly updates to just a reminder.
Awesome, thank you.
A couple of other things. MSBA, just attached here a timeline with some important dates coming up for the MSBA program. Most important dates coming up recently over the next couple of weeks is the OPM Selection Committee, the bids are due, the proposals are actually due on December 19th. The selection committee is going to make a recommendation to meet by December 23rd. I know that's a very tight time window, but we're following the MSBA guidelines on this to ensure that we're on their February agenda, so I'm hoping either December 26th or the 27th to meet with the top firm, negotiate a price with them, and then get the building committee to choose that committee, so we're progressing with this. It's just a tight time window right now.
Has the, I remember we formed a committee, but it wasn't going to really formally meet until after the feasibility study.
I think they've met twice, David? Yeah.
And anything to report out of that?
Just basically, we selected the subcommittee. I'm on the subcommittee to select the contractor.
OPM.
OPM contractor. That's basically the task for the moment.
Okay.
So there's a series of meetings already set up to complete that task, and we'll be on track when we get that completed.
Great, okay, thanks, David.
Just one or two other things. Deputy Police Chief interview process. The chief mentioned that during his updates, the assessment center was conducted this week. We anticipate that they're going to have the candidates ranked within the next few days, hopefully by tomorrow, actually. I'd like the Board of Selectmen in some way to meet informally with the top three candidates so you can get to know them a little bit better before formally bringing them before the Board of Selectmen, and I don't want to have any open meeting law violations or anything. So would the board be interested in doing something like a two and two, you know, round robin type of thing, so two of you can meet with one candidate, two of you meet with another, and kind of rotate? And does that sound acceptable to you guys?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And then maybe we can bring a top candidate forward, either the last meeting in December or first meeting in January, so chief some help there.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Good. Select Board update. I know we briefly, haven't talked about that in a while. Council's working on the draft language for the, for the board to consider, so we can submit it to the state. So I'm hoping that we'll have some draft language for you at your next meeting, so we can make sure that process keeps moving there, and that's about it.
Great. Any questions for Jim?
Yeah, one question. What did we talk about at the last meeting? There was one other item that you had discussed, oh, mass housing on Cedar Street, South Street.
Yes.
Did you hear anything?
No, they haven't approved it yet. They haven't sent us any notification. We're just waiting on them. There's some unanswered questions, obviously, there as part of our letter that we raised, so we haven't heard anything.
Nothing new. Any other questions or comments for Jim? Before we move on to the minutes, I meant to have this put on the agenda today, I hope that we can just sort of cover it quickly, but we had the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee presentation some weeks ago, and I think they're still looking for one of us to be on committee. I don't know if anybody has thought about that or be willing to serve on it or not, but I thought I'd bring it back up, and I think we need to let them know by sometime in January, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, if no one else is, I'm happy to just put my name out there and do it, so I think it's important that we be represented, so. I don't know how, what we need to do, but if, but I'm happy to step up and do that, so I don't know, we need to notify, but...
Is everyone else okay? And I'll let Liz know that Jim's going to be the board's representative on there?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
If someone else really wants to do it, I'm happy to.
I'll let Liz know.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we have minutes now of October 15th, 2019. Any other motion?
Sorry, a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 15th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero.